You're live.
Alright, welcome to the July 20th meeting of the Town and Planning Board. The master of the conference, so I'll stand up.
I declare the night sits in America and to the Republic, for its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Yeah, pull back it tonight. We have a match this February, but February there was quite a bit of, uh, meeting minutes on the three pages of meeting minutes, and we're not gonna have Glenn read it tonight. Everybody have a chance to go over the meeting minutes? Okay, um, in that case, instead of just reading them, we're just gonna take, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes as a document, dear. And motion, no second? Second, by Dan. All eyes? Right? Motion approved. Let's open this document. First off, we have a public hearing for John Falzer for Haxman, we did that last time. We got 7:35, so we got about four minutes before we start that. You gotta wait up here in this to open it?
Can we refer the two land separations, that would be a email?
Okay, I'll do that. We did land separations via email, we all concurred. Just to go over them, when was another Sunshine Acres land separation? Okay, it looks like, uh, we separated 47.72 acres, we split them all into parcels. It does comply with all the zoning laws, no contingencies were declared. And we get a, uh, email vote, all yeses on that, so we're just gonna reaffirm that everybody voted yes on that. Okay, yeses, okay. So we're gonna approve the, uh, land separation with the Sunshine Acres land separation. So we're gonna approve that. Good, that?
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve the reaffirmation of the-
Okay, I'll take the motion to approve the reaffirmation of the Sunshine Acres land separation. Sean, make the motion, no second? Uh, with the second? All eyes?
Alright.
I approve whatever.
The Capitol One's the same thing, it's just the reaffirmation of the vote.
Of that reaffirmation of the, if Barbara Capitol land separation. Uh, this one, created from plenty of lots, uh, these brands a little while, um, is a merger with parcel eight dot F one dash eight. Is undersized clear frontage, require the merge with the other parcel.
Yeah, that was, they're selling off a piece of farmland. The people that own that house have an undersized under frontage lot, they're buying another undersized under frontage piece adjacent to that from that farm separation. Okay, and they're gonna merge that, which creates a more compliant lot, which they need because they're putting it under septic system, so. So it actually, it actually makes that a better lot, makes it a compliant lot. So the subsequent, so required a merger, which that was all, that was all reaffirmed in the email vote due to the COVID stuff, so we just had to give a-
Yep, so there's emails, yeah. Yeses from everybody on that one, on the emails, so just to reaffirm that everybody did yes. Everybody who's yes on that, okay, and make a motion to approve the, uh, land separation. Uh, with motion approved, the land separation for, uh, Barbara Capitol, have a second? Okay, with the second? All eyes? Motion approved, or land separation approved. Now, I think we can open up the public hearing for John Falzer, so we know. John Falzer public hearing is now open.
Alright, I'm gonna go over this quick for you guys?
Uh, sure.
Yeah, we, we-
Does this need to be seen on the livestream?
Several months ago.
What's on?
Does this need to be seen on the livestream, because I have to move the camera, so.
This?
Yeah.
If, if somebody needs it, I mean, if you want to, it's up to you.
Alright.
What this is, is Mr. Falzer bought, uh, this piece of property from his uncle on the corner of Harper and Sumner Road. And at one point years and years ago, it was a tractor repair service, that business was closed, and the building had not been used for a few years as well. At one time, uh, twenty years ago, that had been zoned as a commercial parcel because of the existing business that had been there for decades, and a previous rezoning that had been changed to low density residential. Uh, Mr. Falzer has excellent tree service, uh, and he ended up purchasing that and he moved his business from that and created a problem because it's low density residential and we didn't have zoning laws, to identify what, where is landscaping, horticultural services at. Just to reaffirm for anybody that might be listening, uh, town zoning laws are, are changed over time. We don't have contingencies for every possible thing. There's a lot of landscaping, horticultural services that exist. They typically start out as one-person operations and then grow and end up having, you know, sometimes multiple employees. Mr. Falzer has, what?
Three employees.
Three employees. Uh, basically does tree trimming, um, and property maintenance and, and lumbering. So essentially, we didn't have any way for that to fit into our zoning law, so it, it, it fits within a lot of the uses in a low density residential area. So we created, um, some definitions to identify landscaping and horticultural services. I read the definitions, it's in our zoning laws, and landscaping, horticultural services included in this category are companies engaged in landscape design and architecture, soil preparation and grading, irrigation systems, tree shrub and lawn planting, hardscape construction including retaining walls, cafes, patios, lawn care, landscape maintenance, arborist services including tree trimming and line clearance. And then throughout different sections under low density, um, and several other sections of our zoning law, that was gathered as a special use permit, site plan review. So, in the case of Mr. Falzer, he has the property, um, it's not inconsistent with multiple other types of land uses in low density residential. We have, uh, so now that we have the proper definitions and zoning in place for that, we've asked Mr. Falzer and Graves to come in and approve the special use permits. That serves two purposes, it, it legitimizes the businesses that they've been running for, you know, many years, and it corrects inconsistencies in our zoning law so that, so that it protects the landowner and it protects the neighboring parcels as well. So, um, by authorizing a special use for none of these premises, um, it gives, it clarifies, you know, greater areas of the end of our law. So anyway, Mr. Falzer's here at my request, uh, because it did fit within the zoning, and now it does, but he, he's required of a special use permit. You can see the parcel up on top there. What I would point, the only thing I would point out is, the use, the use is, fits well within the neighborhood. The only thing, as you can see some of the parcel lines here, um, we've talked about this, is there, there is a residential structure here adjacent to the parcel line. But typically, you have to have, on a low density residential parcel, you have to have setbacks for structure and equipment. And the only thing I would ask for, the operation is very small inside, you work, your hours are pretty consistent, you work pretty much business hours right now.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah. Now, why don't you explain to the board, you know, you pile up the lumber, what you do with it and that type of stuff? So the, Dan, how much do you?
Basically, I bring back the wood that we cut up during the day, and, uh, cut them up for part when you see in the winter time. But we pile those logs up and, uh, we wait till winter time to cut it up and, uh, make the part without it.
So, yeah, the only, the only thing, and Mr. Falzer and I talked about this, is that with the piles of wood being right on the property lines there, and whether being, this is currently a vacant structure, but it has been purchased, um, is that, uh, the lumber being piled up is probably too close to the property line because you'd have to worry about pests and rats and, you know, insects and that type of stuff. And then, and then the, you know, the, uh-
Was that, that a little bit, uh, something, is that fifty feet off?
Well, why did I say I'll zoom out, because this is a large parcel. So the only thing, the only concern that I have is that, is the location of where he would do that. If we look at this parcel, this parcel goes halfway across this field, out where this ditch is and where the parcel line is. That goes out into that field, so he owns subtle acres here. So there's nothing around this area, he can more than maintain adequate setbacks from zoning across the road as a wooded area and a ditch. It's a very low intensity land use, it's not inconsistent with many other uses in low density residential with that, you know, planning board, I think we reasonable the stipulation in there that the storage of logs and lumber and that, and the cutting up of wood would be better suited over in this part, part of the parcel. I'm kind of keeping away from it, being, uh, the residential lot. And I don't do- Have any concerns or questions about that?
No, they can be done, once that's put in driveway and in a parking lot. So we take it in the mud, because it's kind of wide over there.
Okay, that's all I got on it.
Okay.
Um, for members, can we?
He's been in business since, what, in 2008? 2008, so, been in business for twelve years and had no problems, you know, got a good neighbor, it's just that he moved to a site where, you know, we had to make some difference.
Where do you store the logs?
Nah.
They're restored there, uh, on one side of the garage, yeah.
Is that a problem with the log? What's that?
Is that a problem with the log?
Well, it's, I mean, I can move it, I got the equipment to move it, I, I'm just gonna have to get, uh, get some filling stuff to put on the other side, so I can save up-
Yeah, we, we, when we had talked about this, because it's been ongoing while we got the regulations in place, I, I told the, the property was vacant, there was no issues, I said, you know, don't move anything until you've got some direction from us, because, yeah, there was no complaints on it, and we wanted to make sure, we're not gonna tell him to move something if he doesn't get the approval to move it, so, yeah, I told him to hang on until we get through this process.
Okay.
And then, um, I think that'll be reasonable, because like I said, there's nobody in the building right now, I think it'd be reasonable if we have time to, for the driveway to do what it needs to do.
Yeah. Okay.
Please take notice, the Town and Planning Board will be holding a public hearing to hear the request of John Falzer of Darien, New York. John Falzer has submitted an application for a special use permit to operate his arborist service. Location of said project will be located at 1007 Inverford Road, Darien, New York, 14040, and 7 dot dash 1 dash 24 dot 211. Said hearing will take place on July 20, 2020 at 7:35 PM at the Darien Center, 10569 Allegheny Road, Darien, New York, 14040.
And we did gain some feedback from Kami. A planning board decision, county planning board decision was approval. The proposed arborist service business should not pose any significant countywide or inter community impact. Signed, Upey Altmerin, uh, planning board director. So that's, they didn't bust any stipulations, so we're good on that. Go ahead and give the seeker. I don't know if you guys have it on your, do it. Okay, will the proposed action create a material conflict with adaptive land use, plan, or zoning regulations? Will the proposed action result in change in use or intensity of land? Will the proposed action impair the quality or character of the existing community? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, bike, and walkway? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate easily valuable energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies? Public-private wastewater treatment facilities? Will the proposed action impair the, well, character or quality of important historic archaeological architecture and aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, or in farm? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, and drainage problems? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Good. With that, I have a, um, motion from negative seeker. End of motion, second? Sean, second? And all eyes? Alright. We have a negative seeker. Yes, it probably does. I'm not, okay. Yeah, that's it. Ten minutes or time?
We've got time, so we're good.
Okay. So we can close the public hearing? Make a motion to close the public hearing? Uh, motion, second, second? Second, Pam? All eyes? Public hearing is closed. And now we'll make a motion to approve the, uh, yeah, special use permit, sorry. Make a motion to approve the special use permit? Do we wanna put the, um-
Get the, get the, alright, Ryan?
Okay, yeah. Yeah, do you wanna? Put a, okay. Make a motion, move it, okay, um, do we wanna put a stipulation on it? How long he has to do that? Hundred and eighty days? What time about, you can do it in a hundred and eighty days?
Yeah.
Okay, we good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, for the motion, we're going to test out the required setbacks within a hundred and eighty days of approval. He, he's making the motion.
I'll make the motion.
With the required setbacks. But a second? Done a second, all eyes? Alright. Motion approved. So the special use permit is approved, is approved? You're all set, Mr. Falzer?
Right, they're all set. Yeah. Basically, you get, uh, just give yourself a pick, you put Falzer.
Yeah.
On the other side. And we have somebody at the, uh, we have somebody here.
Right, I'm not gonna worry about that. Alright, you're good, thank you, I appreciate it.
Good to see you, good to see you, board.
Okay.
You ready, what?
Alright, thanks, sir. Thanks, your members here.
Yeah.
Okay. That, sub fifty. Next up, we're gonna have another public hearing starting in two minutes. Starting out, sub fifty. So we've opened the public hearing for Thomas Graves Arboretum. And also another one coming up in five minutes, Graves Tree Service, the public. So the public hearing is now open. Yes, sir?
Name is Bruce Willroy, uh, this is application number OS 20.
Okay.
Okay, I'm here to support that application.
Okay, that would be the Thomas Graves Arboretum.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
He has a very nice piece of property, and, uh, what he does with it, uh, on this, uh, issue here is very good, and he gets an asset to the neighborhood, and they're fine for it.
Okay. No, thank you. Is that it?
Okay, and, again, to kind of go over, um, it's the same type of thing, um, I asked Mr. Graves to come in because the Arboretum and the tree service, that, all these things fell under the same, you know, requirements. So, uh, Mr. Graves has been in business since 1984, so he's been around, you know, for thirty plus years, no complaints and no problems. Um, in fact, the Arboretum is one, um, along with 26, I believe, you said, in the world. And it was interesting, we do, we have the county planning board meeting, and the county was real interested to find out about it, and it's, uh, I think it's a senior in NASA. He does a lot of educational work out there, and he's on his way at the door now. Because they're asking people to come and just learn their country.
Right on time.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that.
But he's completely explained it, explained everything before.
Mr. Graves, how are you, sir?
Don't worry, so, good. We just opened the public hearing, so.
Excellent. You're right on time. Um, you got anything you want to share about this, John, and just, um, to support you on behalf of your, uh, William? It's a great area that we have, so, anything else you need to add, or?
I don't know, did you need any more, or what?
Not really. You got anything else to carry on it?
No, um, I, there's no issues with it, like I said, we're just, we're just getting, getting everything lined up with, you know, definitions and language and law, okay, correcting inconsistencies in our zoning itself, okay?
And we did go over, um, definition on the previous, uh, public hearings, and we need to do that again?
No, it's, we're, yeah.
Probably probably just.
Yeah.
Like I was just saying, we have, we have two public hearings, we have the Arboretum now, and then in about five minutes, we're gonna open up the, um, tree service, the public hearing, so we'll be right on, you'll be comfortable. So, alright, you want to read the public comments for the Arboretum?
Please take notice, the Town and Planning Board will be holding a public hearing to hear the request of Thomas Graves of Darien Center, New York. Thomas Graves has submitted an application for a site plan review for an arboretum dedicated to use and study trees and trees. Location of said project will be located at 1815 Sherret Road, Darien Center, New York, 14040, and 11 dot dash 2 dot 10 at 12. Said hearing will take place on July 20, 2020 at 7:50 PM at the Darien Center, 10569 Allegheny Road, Darien, New York, 14040. On order PVCVA.
Alright, thank you, Glenn. Did they get a response back from Kami? Um, Kami's decision was, planning board decision was approval, explanation. Proposed arboretum should pose no significant countywide or inter community impact. Signed, Upey Altmerin, Altmerin, Director, um, Jensen County Planning Board. Um, we did have somebody else come in, are you here for the, uh, Arboretum, sir? Sir? Sir?
In the back?
Sir, are you here for the Arboretum?
I can't hear.
Oh, are you, are you here to comment?
I didn't even hear what, what it said.
Oh, are you, are you, are you here to speak?
Huh?
Are you here to speak? Alright, are you here to speak?
He's here in my notes.
No, no, I'm here to see what's going on.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm not here to speak, I gotta see what's happening.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, okay.
No, you're all, you're fine, okay. Um, if you look up on the over, then over there, it's, I haven't heard the steam.
Um, I'll zoom in, you can see all the little circles, these are all, whoa, whoa. I'm sure Mr. Graves can explain a little bit about what he has there, um, but they're all just different, you know, species and specimens, aren't they?
And there's over eight hundred different species of trees on that property. Um, that's a whole layer of foliage, so, doesn't, I don't like looking at it like that, because it doesn't give as much credit and as much as it's really filled in. But, uh, they have an arboretum in New York State, you just can't wake up and say you want an arboretum. You have to, uh, get a, um, charter from the Board of Regents from the University of New York State, and we've done that. So we're allowed to use the word arboretum in, in a business format, and, uh, you know, this is what we've accomplished over, probably about thirty years.
Okay.
Like, uh, newer building up there?
Huh?
Got a newer building up there, and it's doing more and more educational programs, from what I understand?
I'm gonna open this other, uh, the second public hearing right now, real quick, um, for the Thomas Graves Tree Service, uh, public hearing. So that public hearing is now open also, so we have two. You wanna comment on that?
I just wanna comment, when I seen, uh, those public hearings where he just said, uh, tree service, I thought it was a very open question or statement. I met with, uh, Gary over there, and he went through the whole system with me, and then I did receive a copy of, from the planning board. I believe it's a continuation from 1994, it's just that it's the update of the codes. And I would have no opposition, as long as, that's what I'm saying, my whole concern was the noise factor. Mr. Continuating from ninety-four to where it is now, it's fine.
Well, the tree, come, it's just like a, a holding area for the, the employee parking, I mean, there's-
It's all explained here, so, I reviewed it. So, I do not oppose it.
It's mainly during business hours, two hours.
Right. I just wanna give that, just the opening thing, when I seen, you know, tree service, I own ten properties in Florida, in counties, and, uh, there is a tree service near one of my other properties, and it was ATF, so, no.
Okay.
So that was my concern, but, very well explained.
Yep.
Very well explained.
Okay.
Real good neighbor, let's continue.
Okay, we appreciate that, man, too. Alright, um, so is there anything about the buildings?
Yeah, the tree service basically, you know, made for Graves, so it's just basically, he's parked there, he's got a small shop where he has some storage there, on, with the larger trucks and stuff, right? Not even stored at the site, or, or, uh, in another location.
Around the Broadway location in that.
Oh, okay. I mean, this, this site here really doesn't even lend itself to expand or becoming anything more than really what it is, so.
So. And there's no noise factor at night, or, you know, capital trees or neither?
Yes, we do chop down trees, but we're talking about general maintenance of the Arboretum.
Oh, at night?
It's more different.
Now, it's hard.
Trees fall down, and, yeah, we cut trees, and then we dispose the brook. We all run along more.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
But no, not at night.
Yeah.
Not at all.
The, the tree service itself is a, is all self-changing, basically just a storage site.
Okay. Alright, um, anything from the board? Any other questions, yes, about the tree service, or you have read on, anything like that? Everybody's done? In that case, continue the, uh, seeker, um- Okay, so, again, this is not an arboretum. Will the proposed action create material conflict with adaptive land use, or land use plan or zoning regulations? No? Will the proposed action result in change in the use or intensity of use of land? No? Will the proposed action impair the, or, or quality of existing community? Will the proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics that could cause the establishment of a permanent environmental issue in CBA? No? Will the proposed action result in adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, bike, and walkway? No? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate easily valuable energy conservation and renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed action affect existing public or private water supplies? Public and private wastewater treatment utilities? Will the proposed action impair the, or, or quality of impact important historical, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No? Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air qualities, water, or? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No? Will the proposed action create a hazard to the environmental resources or human health? That gives us a negative seeker, I have a- That gives us a negative seeker, I have a. Motion to approve negative seeker. And make a motion, about a second? Second by Sean, all eyes. We have a negative seeker. Sorry, someone fifty. That was sorry, someone fifty, that's a flag, so we can close that. Okay, um, so we have a public hearing, the motion is approved here. Motion by Dan, second. Second by Sean, all eyes. Public hearing is closed. Um, let's take the motion, motion to approve the, uh, special use permit, or the arboretum side of the, of, uh, Thomas Graves. We got a, a motion to approve the special use permit. Motion by Colin, second. Second by Pam, all eyes. Eyes. Motion for, uh, special use permit is approved for the arboretum. We got a few minutes left on the, uh, tracer inside stuff. We have a public hearing open for just a few more minutes. But, um, can you read the public notice on that?
Please take notice, the Town and Darian Planning Board will be holding a public hearing to hear the request of Thomas Graves of Darian Center, New York. Thomas Graves has submitted an application for a tree service agreement. The location of that project will be located at one eight two nine Sherwood Road, Darian Center, New York, one four zero four zero, and one one dot dash two dot one two. Then hearing will take place on July twenty, twenty twenty at seven fifty P M. At the Darian Town Hall, one zero five six nine Allegheny Road, Darian, New York, one four zero four zero. On your P B C B A card.
All right, thank you very much, Glenn. And we did get a, a response back from county on this one also. The decision from, planning board's decision from county is approval. Explanation, the proposed tree service business should pose no significant countywide or intercommunity impact. Signed, Uwe Beal, chairman, March twelfth, twenty twenty, Jensen County Planning Board Director. And we got a, a seeker on this one. Okay. So number one, will proposed action create material conflict with adaptive land use plan or zoning regulations? Will proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No? Will proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No? Will proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environment area? No? Will proposed action result in the adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit by human walkway? No? Will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No? Will proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies? No? Public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No? Will proposed action impair the character or quality of impact historical, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No? Will proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? No? Will proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No? Will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No? With that, we have a negative seeker. I have a motion to approve the negative seeker. Dan made a motion, uh, second. Second by Pam, all eyes. Eyes. Negative seeker is approved. Okay, now we just hit a little bit of a flag. Now we can close the public hearing, um, and we also go over the closing of the public hearing? Anybody else?
I'll ask them real quick.
Ah? Oh. Right?
Wrong answer.
Speaker for all good deeds. Uh, motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Phil, second. Second by Sean, all eyes. All right, public hearing is closed. Now I need a motion to approve the, uh, special use permit for Graves' tree service. Do you have that motion? Motion by Sean, second. Oh, sorry. Second by Dan, all eyes. Eyes. Motion is approved, so we're, yes, that's special use permit for Graves' tree service is approved. So you're all set, sir? All right.
Can't do that, really.
Huh?
Did you do the motion for that, William?
Yes, we did.
Oh, okay. I was saying.
That's going so fast, you need to say.
Okay, ready, guys?
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just send you stuff in the mail.
All right.
Thanks, Tom. See you later.
Yep, have a good night. All right. Thanks, Tom, have a good night.
See you later.
So we got the most. With that, and that's our eight ten, so we got about five minutes there. Um, let's hit the miles line separation on new business.
Dan's playing that, he is, he's got a, um, the parcel, he's got, he got a large parcel there, um, down along Parker Road, down by the CSX track.
Oh, okay.
Basically, he wants to split out a lot. So he's gonna split out one compliant building lot, so he can have three hundred foot furnished by eighty thousand square feet, so, um, you know, he's, if it's approved by the planning board, they don't get a survey, they don't bring a mile rate for signing it, I'll double check and make sure this is fine, but. He understands that he has got to have three hundred feet of roof furnished, and he's got all the square feet he's got on the land to separate out a small park.
Okay.
Actually, I'm reading. Well, it's, it's a compliant land separation, it's no issue with it.
Okay. So really, as long as he has the three hundred foot furnished, he's got no problem with that, right?
Yep, he's got the furnished in the area.
Okay. Three hundred foot, five thousand, equal eighty thousand feet. Okay. So the railroad goes, right through middle of this, or that?
No, no, I'm gonna get over here, I was like.
What's that?
Railroad's on the water edge.
Oh, okay. Uh, okay, okay.
Take it over here. But it's right across street from my house.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I knew it was a relative. Oh, that's why I said pretty, that's a grandson?
Yeah, I knew it wasn't his son, but I quite remember what the relation was. And some of the area is opposite, where you can see it. But he owns, he owns this big parcel here, this great big lot, this big, this field. Okay. And he wants to separate out on the south end, just like his son built a house here, and he wants to separate three hundred feet along the south property line, he's gonna go back as far as it used to create a compliant building lot, so basically, he's gonna, he's got about twenty half acres there.
Okay.
Twenty half acre lot.
Okay. He's gonna own part of that, for members? Any questions, issues? Okay. Um, in that case, um, I'm gonna make the motion to approve the, uh, the miles and separation. Let's say, as long as they have the required road for it, they'll put that into the, uh, motion as well.
Yeah, very.
Yeah, as long as it's compliant, so. Somebody make that motion? Dan, make a motion, with the miles separation, as long as it's compliant block. Second, second by Dan, all eyes. 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 Motion approved, and separation is approved. Yep, now we will open a public hearing for Doug Demos and Braines.
Okay, I can't take it wrong. Give you a little background on that.
Yep.
Put it right up here in the map, so you can see it. Uh, Mr. Demos grew up in the area, uh, he lives out in South Florida, California now. Um, he's always had an interest in, in a restaurant there, he had some sentimental value to him. His, uh, sister is the one that actually will be managing and running the parcel, from what I understand. Uh, Mr. Demos has bought the parcel, he's making some improvements in the inside, it's the old Johnny bears. Um, essentially, what he's doing is, he's just updating the interior. Um, there was two, that building actually started out as like an outdoor window service type restaurant, so it had typical service station, the Google or shoot orange restaurants in the back. Uh, the only upgrade that he's making to the interior of the building is, um, we asked that the building be brought up to code as far as the restroom facility, so.
Yeah.
Um, he's got an engineer in the building, we work with him, uh, on, on approving a design, and he's got a, uh, engineer that is gonna be submitting plans to give us one, gonna be a single bathroom, but it's gonna be a family bathroom, so it's gonna be a large bathroom, and you have accessible diaper changing station, all that.
Okay.
So, um, so that is really, the only change is being made on the inside, other than just, you know, cosmetics.
Okay.
And essentially, I'm representing it, cause obviously it's in California. The business model is identical to what was there, they, basically, gonna be a burger, fry joint, you know, ice cream, and that type of thing. So business hours are gonna be, you know, day eating type hours. Um, parking, you know, he's got plenty of parking for the occupancy, we're already in the building. Um, you know, we've talked with him about, you know, changing the sign, uh, he may change the sign at some point in time, but that, that's all regularly done, or as only was, it is.
Okay, that's.
Um, there's really nothing, um, there's really nothing about the property, um, as it stands now that it's changing. It needs a special use permit because it's going through a change of occupancy and a change of, you know, the use is staying the same, but because of the change of occupancy, it has to go through a review process here.
Okay.
So the, the planning board are looked at, if you've got any questions as far as parking, um, sight lines, um, you know, buffering, you know, noise, that type of thing.
Yep.
We talked to him and said that, you know, the planning board approves it based on what the use was, a similar use as to what was there, that that's, um, you know, you guys can regulate the hours of operation, noise, and so on, and told him, I said, if the use is going to significantly change at some point in the future, he would have to come and reapply, so in other words, if you decide we're on twenty-four hours a day, and you have vans there, that type of thing, so.
Okay.
Um, the approval process is basically on the parameters on which he's approved operating. Um, so he's, basically, he's going to operate what was there, just under new ownership.
I don't know how much it matters, but how long have you been serving there?
Um, he did inquire about, uh, possibly, he said some thought about serving beer and wine. Um, but it's not, it's, it's not to be a family establishment, serve, serve, you know, family style food, burgers, fries, wings, you know, that type of stuff. Uh, but those are all, you know, that's all the planning board, if you guys want to discuss that. But as far as the occupancy, you know, parking, um, it's, it's all as per the way it is.
Okay.
So he's gone there about, um, hours of operation, right, and that's the kind of lifting board.
Okay. You guys heard the, uh, public hearing on that?
We're their neighbors.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, where do you live?
Well, the next cousin, I'm on the break. Our neighbors.
Oh, heck, there you are, okay.
Yeah, that's us. So they're not gonna use the grass cart for anything, or put a fencing, or.
For what?
Unfencing or anything, the grass cart, I was, it's a big lot, it's big.
Yeah, it's big, and that's, and that's part of the reason that when a building like a commercial property changes occupancy, that it goes through this vetting process.
Yeah, yeah.
Basically, it's just an oversight so that the owner doesn't come in and all of a sudden it turns into a twenty-four hour day operation.
The mini golf.
Or, yeah.
That's my concern, I don't want my dogs to start barking.
Yeah, but, but understand also that he's allowed to, to do uses that are consistent with zoning and stuff, but we, we have the oversight to, um, to, to approve certain things, so. Um, but really, uh, this is kind of basically just to have a, you know, family restaurant there.
The same thing that John did.
Same thing that was really there, yeah?
We like this.
Yep.
We like it, we go for ice cream.
Yeah.
You guys don't wanna be yelping in the backyard?
Well, but if that would be the case, then we would think, you know, my dogs will be the ones that are barking, so I would wanna put up a privacy fence to keep them from doing that, you know what I mean? Like, my good neighbor.
Yeah.
Um, but if he's not gonna do anything with it, we're just.
Not at this point, no.
Yeah, I'm keep.
No, it's, it's basically gonna be very similar to what was there.
Yeah, any data on when they're gonna open?
No, um, I think he kinda wanted to open, you know, this summer.
Before, yeah.
But then this all happened, and, you know, the renovations, the, the minor renovations in the building, I think took him a little bit longer because he had to get some, you know, people in there to, to design it. And there's a bearing law, so we had a structural engineer, there was some paperwork on it, and stuff like that, so.
He's honestly responsible for keeping up the law and this.
Yeah.
John Dillon.
Yep.
Is there a timely code for that, what has to be maintained, grass fights or anything like that?
Well, that falls under the, uh, property maintenance code, which is a part of what they call the uniform code, so basically, a lot of states operate under the uniform code nowadays. Um, the uniform code doesn't really specifically state a height for grass. Um, an individual jurisdiction can label height for grass, we don't. Uh, we don't have that particular regulation, and understand that that becomes problematic in a town like this because we're so rural.
Yeah.
When you have a ten acre lot, somebody can say, well, they don't hold a front yard, well, they live three hundred feet off the road, so sometimes they don't.
Perfect.
In a residential area like this, though, however, that is different. Um, and that would fall, that would really fall as a discretionary decision on our part as code officials. Um, if a product, if a parcel became a nuisance, or became a pestilence problem, then, then we could deal with it that way. But we don't have a cut and dry, it's gotta be three inches higher, can't be higher, it's, some, some in this valley around here will have a, have a ten inch height, if it comes over ten inches, and other people start to complain. But, um, we don't really have anything specific, unfortunately, we really haven't run into too much of that, so.
Yeah, I don't care what people do.
You start getting rats out of the neighbor's house, that.
Oh.
Yeah. I don't even talk to you. Yep.
Yeah. Okay, well, good, thank you for that.
Okay. Next one, would you please read the, uh, and then, please.
Please take the notice, please take notice, the Town and Darian Planning Board will be holding a public hearing to hear the request of Doug Demos of South Florida, California. Doug Demos has submitted an application for a site plan review to open an increasing much more sensitive changes ownership. The location of this project will be located at one four one five Highway Road, Darian Center, New York, one four zero four zero, and one one dot dash one dash one four dot two two one. Then hearing will take place on July twenty, twenty twenty at eight ten P M. At the Darian Town Hall, one zero five six nine Allegheny Road, Darian, New York, one four zero four zero. On your P B C B A card.
Awesome, thank you, Glenn. And you do have a decision back from county planning? Decision, planning board decision, approval, explanation. The proposed restaurant should pose no significant countywide or intercommunity impact. Signed, Uwe Beal, chairman, March twelfth, twenty twenty, uh, county planning board director. Would that, anything else from the board, any suggestions you guys know what to put on, and things to be discussed about it? Everybody good?
We have, uh, I would ask that we get some federal language in the motion, so that we identify it as a family type, family style type restaurant, per hour, you know, do you wanna limit the hours of operation to midnight, or? Uh, that's, that's entirely up to the board, it's a true decision, but, um, you wanna just leave it open, I mean.
We got, thank you.
It's one of the family style.
Family style restaurant, it really shouldn't.
I would imagine it never gets, if it's involved with one of the open twenty-four.
Well.
Yeah, well, my, my concern as a zoning officer is that we don't identify what we're approving, that all of a sudden it turns into a dumb entertainment establishment, we have a restriction, and we haven't identified that it's a family, full-service restaurant, that, um, it doesn't give me any reason to go back and tell them that they can't go.
Yeah. So, okay, so it's a family style restaurant, and they shouldn't have any reason to be operating past midnight outside. With that restriction, like also, you got.
Midnight would be probably a wonder, if they opened, like, at night for concerts, or.
Yeah. Okay, it's midnight? Everybody good with that?
Yeah, camp on.
Family style restaurant?
It's supposed to say seven to midnight, or six to midnight, six to midnight, if you want to.
Six to midnight.
Just because it is adjacent to residential parks.
Yep. Okay, um, we do the seeker real quick. The proposed action create material conflict with adaptive land use. Will proposed action create material conflict within that land use plan or zoning regulations? Will proposed action result in change in the use, intensity of use of land? Will proposed action impair the quality, character or of the existing community? Will proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment from a critical environment area? Will proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? Will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation and renewable energy opportunities? Will proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? Public or private waste watering treatment utilities? Will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic or archaeological potential or aesthetic resources? Will proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? Wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality control, flora and fauna? Will proposed actions often increase the potential for erosion, flooding, drainage problems? Will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? That gives us negative seeker. We have a motion to approve the negative seeker. Motion by Pam, second. Second by Don, all eyes. Motion approved. We have a negative seeker. Um, now to close the public hearing, anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion to put the public hearing. Motion by Sean, second. Second by Pam, all eyes. All right. Public hearing is closed. Now, the last thing we need is a motion to approve the, uh, special use permit to Doug Demos and the, uh, Brandon's restaurant, Brandon's restaurant. And a motion? A motion with the?
That's what it's your motion.
The stipulation with the family restaurant and the hours from 6:00 AM to 12:00? That's just a motion, okay. Uh, and a second. Second by Sean, all eyes. All right. Motion approved. Yes, Don, your motion, yes. And that special use permit is approved. Okay. And that one's done. Now we've got a few more things. We do the ZOLAD's land separation.
John Zoladz, I've got the parcel up on the map there. Okay, corner parcel. There are 10 going on in the, in the curve in the road there. That corner Mammoth Harbor. Um, he wants to split out four building lots. And each, okay. As you can see on the map, three of them will have 300 foot of road frontage on the Harlow Road side and be approximately 600 feet deep. So each one of the first three lots is 300 by 600. We've got a last lot that's on the bend in the road, it has 250 feet of frontage on Harlow Road, but 600 feet of frontage on Mammoth Road. So they're all compliant building lots and they're all consistently zoning.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no zoning issues at all with any of these lots.
And doesn't affect the one next to it, right?
Nope.
Nope. Let's make sure. All right, um. Four buildings. A lot of them. Okay. Compared to about 600, we're talking, I think that's like two acres, right?
Yeah, I, I plotted them all out. I drew the maps up and stuff and they're, they're all, we've got plenty of area.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the board? All right, I'm making a motion or I have a motion to approve the ZOLAD's land separation. Make motion by Sean, second. Second by Don, all eyes. All right, motion approved. Um, land separation.
In fact, that smallest lot of 250 by 600 is 150 thousand square feet, we only need 80, so it's almost twice as.
Okay. Okay. All right, the Miller land separation, separation, maybe more.
Yeah, this road near Brown.
That's just some, I'm using a ground for recreation.
Now, this one, I'll bring this up here in a second. It's, if you look at third page, shows the, the overall, the size of the original lot with that corner lot broken out, it's in yellow. There's the orange highlighted one, then the yellow. So it's one lot now, they're separating out that corner wooded lot. And essentially it's, it sounds like they're going to use it for hunting. I talked with Todd Nancy from Bond Traders, she came in and presented the land separation. So I talked to him about, you know, certain issues that we might have with recreational use, but just general recreational using it for hunting, that's one thing, like, you know, put it on a dirt track or something, guys don't see us.
Yeah, that's why, since I saw recreational use on here, I went, oh, what kind of recreational use are we talking?
Yeah, we talked about that, so.
Would you put a restriction on that or?
No, not until they do something, but there's no restriction in place. That's, that's not going to find the landlord or to, you know, if they do something, it's a violation that I get.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, um, so as you say, that was.
Is the separation refined?
Yeah, let me see where that was, I'll bring it up on the map for you.
Looks like the original still happened.
Yeah, they're splitting out, it's right on the tax parcel on the cover side. They're going to split out a house and a barn and sell it separate from the rest of the land. And if there's a house and barn, they're going to auction together. But the part that we're concerned with in Darian is, you can see here's the tax parcel line where my person along. So this parcel that we're talking about, there it is, is this big rectangle parcel. They're going to separate out that wooded lot, drainage area there.
Oh, okay.
And that's, it's more than compliant. It's a thousand by 680 on the one side and a thousand by 375 on the other side. It's like 20, it's small acres.
The corner, right?
Yeah. Yeah, well, I can plot it out here. It's, um. It's about to be an approximation. 550 thousand square feet. But it's going to be 12.75 lot.
Okay.
So, more than enough.
Yep. All right, any other questions concerning on that one board? All right, and it takes kind of a motion to approve the Daniel Miller land separation. Okay, motion, second. Second by Sean, all eyes. Motion approved. The land separation for Daniel Miller is approved. And last thing on the back of the night. Um, basically regulating battery energy storage systems. We've all got some female of the day. Um, what else, what we want to do with it?
All right, uh, all eyes. I've thought about it here. Video, quick explanation. Paulson, footnote version. We approved commercials, we have wind logs in our, in our town org, it says, and by the way, that wind project is dead. Project is, they would do the project. It's not, they said they, uh, told us it's no longer feasible for whatever reason, I don't, it's a regulatory thing. Okay, so that's done, so we won't be hearing any more from that.
Oh, okay.
Uh, this is, this is something that's totally separate. Um, they started training code officials in battery energy storage units about two training cycles ago. So I've been to a couple, like one hour seminars during our annual trainings on battery energy storage units. Okay. Bottom line is, um, as battery technology improves, they have the capacity to store energy and actually make it make it viable, just like the battery, battery technology's gotten better for these electric cars and the distances have gotten better. One of the problems with wind and solar systems is that they produce during the day or when it's windy or when it's dark out and the wind's not blowing, they go offline. Well, the battery storage units now have gotten so sophisticated that they can store enough energy commercially so that they can generate power during the day or when the wind's blowing, store the big energy sink and then put it back out on the grid in a commercial capacity. So the storage units we're talking about are commercial battery storage units.
Okay.
Um, a couple pictures. Typically what they are is the ones that they, they use are typically mounted in a trailer like this. Basically all they do is they take the battery cells and however much energy they need to store, they just start stacking cells. When they fill up a trailer, they fill up another trailer. So what you'll end up with, I'll show you that commercial setup. So they just start bringing these trailers in. So really the, the, there's not a lot of change to the land that they put them on. It's a minimal footprint and so they can just stack them. And you can see here, this is located in the commercial zone. Um, we were told this spring at our training that there's actually three of these units in downtown Buffalo someplace. So they, they're, they're very low hazard. You understand these trailers itself contains with ventilation, fire and alarm systems, electrical disconnects. Um, and essentially you can isolate each one of these pods and they disconnect them from the grid. So safety wise, they're very safe, they're a very safe system. They're very low hazard environmentally because if they put in, say, a commercial solar energy system on 50 acre parcel and they tie it to the grid, they can park a battery storage unit next to the solar array. When they're producing more power than the, than the grid is using, they store the energy in these, in these battery systems. And then when it's dark and they need the battery during high peak demands like this time of year, they can feed that extra energy to the grid. Uh, the nice thing with these units is just like, um, solar and the wind, they're bonded. You know, there's environmental impact studies that go along with them. But the nice thing with battery units is they come in on a truck, they put in as many as they need for whatever they're using. And at the end of their useful life, you don't have to worry about them just sitting there because they're portable. They come in with a truck and they load it up and they cart it out of there. So they're, they're, as far as energy systems go, they, they appear to be very low, they're very low impact. They're self-contained, um, they don't generate, you know, insignificant noise, light, there's no traffic associated with them. It's just, it's part of the parcel with a commercial energy system these days.
Okay.
Um, just like the commercial solar systems, um, th- these are becoming such a big business now that, that, uh, New York State has come out with a model permitting, model templates, model, nice survey has paired with them. And they, they come out with these, oh, there's one right here. You know, they come out with, um, you know, model, you know, regulating battery energy storage systems. So I started looking at this last year, kind of like one of these things to do. I started looking through some of the laws and who's going to adapt it. Um, our attorney was nice enough to forward to our supervisor, um, and I think I gave him a copy of the letter. Um, it's a municipality with a solar law that town of Darian should, should, should consider adopting a local law to regulate battery energy storage systems. Um, battery energy storage system will become more relevant as companion to all these solar energy projects. Town boards and planning boards may begin to receive applications and that's already occurring in some areas. Um, we have to be prepared to make interpretations as to how such battery energy storage system will impact the town. Um, so our attorney took these laws and he basically looked at our town zoning laws and adapted that law and, which is similar to what I was doing. I was looking at these things and I was like, okay, where do we need to make changes in our definitions, consistency and stuff like that? Um, so essentially I took the law, I took his draft. He forwarded his recommendations to our town, I said, what we should draft. I reviewed it line by line through the model solar energy templates. I highlighted all the changes. He, he took out some definitions that weren't relevant to us. He added some things that, to make it more precise, to some of the language we need for our town and our community. Um, I think he did an excellent job with it. Um, and so really what it comes down to is the town board has referred this to the planning board. And the planning board's role in updating the zoning laws to look at this, make an advisory recommendation to the town board. If there's things that you think it's lacking, thinks, think there's things that aren't addressed, um, make a recommendation to town board if you think it's good the way it stands or consider that, you know, you're good with it. We'll take it back to the town board. The town board processes is they send it to the attorney to be vetted. Of course, he wrote it, so I don't think that's an issue. It will come back to the town board again and the town board would have a public hearing because it's an update to our laws. And then, so the town board has a public hearing and then the town board would approve it to a secret process. So that's kind of the process that we need to go through. Um, so I got the information out to you. Um, if you had a chance to read it, fine, there's a whole, this is a whole book that the state puts out and it's got, they got instruction protocol, I mean, they've got, it's, it's very extensive. Um, so that's a process we need to go through. So you have an option tonight, if you think, um, you're good with it, you can make a recommendation. If you want to table it and have some time to look through it and, you know, get some more input from any of the other board members. Um, it's entirely up to you, but that's, that's the whole thing in itself.
One thing I'm kind of seeing the picture here, curious about, um, like, uh, something that's a fence in there or something. It's going to be fence, unstandard or?
Yeah, there's, that would be something, if you had a large system like that in our area, it may look something like that. But that's, that's a big system there.
Yeah.
You may, you may see something more along the lines of something like this with a commercial solar array. But in the.
I can be secured on some.
In the draft, well, all of that stuff is addressing the draft law. Um, and that's like I said, you know, you can feel free to table it and give yourself some time to go through it. Um, but we've got, in this, in this local law, it's got all the, all the definitions that we would add to it. Um, talks about environmental impact statements, permitting requirements, talks about the different tiers. Um, there's nothing in here on residential systems. Um, because residential systems, think of charging stations for automobiles, you tie the solar panels or solar arrays where you might have battery backup. Some of these battery backup systems will give, um, a residential, both, you can power a whole household for three days out of which you can put in two small battery storage units that will sit on this table. That's like the battery yard. You can run around your house for three days with your solar panels. But the residential ones don't need to be regulated because it's just like the household appliance. It's covered under the electrical code, it's covered under the uniform code. This is strictly citing for commercials energy site. They talk about, um.
I said we got decommissioning.
Yeah, there's signage, lighting, vegetation, noise, decommissioning plants, um, decommissioning funds, um, site applications. Um, just like the wind of the commercial solar, uh, we got commissioning plans, they're all documented in here. They have to satisfy a safety compliance plan and operation and maintenance manual, there's always a set of control. Um, everything's going to be done by, you know, licensed engineers. They have to have emergency operation plan that requires to give the fire department training. Um, and they have emergency response plans, there's setback, height fencing requirements, screen, visibility, ownership changes and safety. Um, and understand too that when these permits come in, this, this is the outline for how we operate. But as a planning board, you can, you, you can put as much restrictions or as least restrictions on any application that comes through there as you want. That's entirely through that, this, this board would have got that process. So if any one of those projects was to come through and you weren't happy with it, you can ask for more.
Okay.
So that's it.
Okay. Was it okay with that?
Well, you were talking about the, these models, the actual units, whatever, they're like a shipping unit.
Yeah, they're probably shipping containers with their built in, so.
They come in, rebuilt in the factory, I think.
Yeah.
They don't do any, I've worked at that in the past, with some other business doing that, replacing batteries for data centers, data sites, that kind of thing.
Uh.
I worked at it in the past, where we would go in and actually change out batteries within like a cell site, a communication shelter.
Yeah.
Or even in, um, office building.
Yeah.
At University of Buffalo or downtown on the Verizon.
Right.
One, one time they worked, main twist mall.
Yeah.
There's probably data centers there. But I'm just wondering if they would be taking the whole unit out and bringing a new unit in, factory built to update. Those batteries always have a designated lifespan.
Right. It, it is my understanding that the way they build these systems in these trailers is that it has a useful lifespan. And then when, and then when it's operationally unfeasible to operate, they will come in, pull the unit out. I mean, it, it appears, and I don't know this for, for any certainty, but it appears that these are, these are, these are engineered. It's an engineered module. So when the module is at the end of its useful life, of course, it's probably also at the end of its code life. In other words, by the time that the system isn't feasible anymore, then you got to update the alarm systems and these, you know, there's, there's other.
Build him each unit.
Yeah.
And then connect it to us.
Yeah.
Central system.
Yeah, basically they just, they easy chain these things together. And they, they put in as many modules as they need.
Each one is like an individual battery, even though it's multiple cells on the side.
Yep. But they're all self-contained with fire and emergency operations.
That's a good way to go. The accidents happen when it's a big job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Table it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no hurry. Yeah, table it from next month.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, we just. It's a long time. Remember, it's.
Yeah, I, I think it's great, yeah, more equipped with fire. Okay, so I got my question for that?
Yeah.
Sure, okay. My motion to, uh, table this till the August meeting or the next meeting that we have. And we make the motion. Second by Don, all eyes.